If we could all stand to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, equal physical liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, we'll start off with any comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to minutes approval. These get emailed to us, so we're approving the minutes of our June 24-13 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 6:24 from our regular planning board meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, Nathan.
That's right.
Committee reports, MJTC, which we're going to put the names next to them.
Yes, Matthew.
I believe is Matthew?
Yes. Yes. Unfortunately, there were only about half in attendance. They still had a quorum. They went over the new, excuse me, the closures of the MBTA track schedules. They came up with the, a new agenda for, oh, something or other. Well, that I know, the Chapter 90 funds that we get from the state, we're only getting 50% of what was promised to us, which was a 50% increase, so it ends up being a 25% decrease from last year, resulting in $316,598 to the town this year. Considerably less. Not a whole lot of specific news. They're looking for, they discussed the trail inventory, so they're looking for that input. They're hoping to get that closed up by 9:00 to 13:00 September of this year. Trail inventory in coalition with the regional trail coalition. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Matthew?
Yeah, sorry. So, trail inventory, that's a new thing to me. Is that like, what kind of trails fall into that category, Matthew?
Open space, I believe. I did ask about that myself because I was interested, and I got an email contact, which unfortunately I have not corresponded with yet. But again, the input is still open till September. And I did inquire which departments from the town they get input from, and Planning Board and DPW is what they said. DPW didn't make much sense to me, but...
Probably, yeah, maybe for maintenance or something. Is that, what are they looking for input, what are they looking to do with trails?
Well, I think they indicated that they've gotten most of the official things from the town groups, and I believe that that was included in the master plan draft that we had gotten two or three meetings ago. There was a, there was a plan there that showed the trails in Lunenburg. I know that it's quite deficient in actual trails that you can walk on.
Ah, okay.
I don't know about the legalities of them.
Is it like, walking, biking, snowmobiling, all of the above?
My understanding, walking and biking, I don't know about the snowmobiles. There is, there's a coalition, there's a group in Lunenburg, Snowmobilers Club, and they've gotten landowners' permissions, they've got an extensive network now.
Gotcha.
But it's not nearly as extensive as the open for foot and pedestrian and probably horseback as well.
Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, I'd like to get more information and explain it in better detail.
Another question about the, so you said, you mentioned the state funding, was that, that Chapter 90, I'm not super familiar with that, is that like state supplemental, like road funding for the town?
Yes, yeah. This year, DeVall Patrick told us that he'd give us 300 million for the roads for the state, and our portion of that was at 300,000. But no, our portion of the 150, because they've only released half of the promised 300 million, they've only released 150 of it, and that's been distributed. I assume, I don't know the facts about that, but, so, his promise was a 50% increase in state funding for roads, and withholding half of that, he's actually given us a 25% decrease over last year.
If they said that they're not going to release the remaining 50?
I asked, I asked where the money was, and they said, well, apparently it wasn't there, and, well, that's not, doesn't sound right. Nobody knew. Not in our pocket.
Gotcha. Thanks for explaining. There was one other thing, sorry. What was the first agenda item you reported on?
Oh, the commuter rail. They're doing work on the commuter rail. They're, they're going to be adding a Monachuset Station.
Oh, wow.
Not, not quite to Gardner, but it's going to be a little bit, I'm not even sure if it's beyond, it must be beyond the Fitchburg Station.
I thought it was Westminster.
It is Westminster.
My understanding was it was going in Westminster.
And they're going to be doing track improvements, they've scheduled it for the next three years. Of course, their 14, 15 approximations were just that, gross approximations. They're going to be doing weekend closures, not, nothing during the week to, so that, not to interrupt the workers, but there's a lot of people that, that use the train on the weekend for work and necessity, elderly going into hospitals in Boston, a lot of tourism, whatnot. They're going to be closing, and I've got a schedule. I'm not sure, is, the schedule, is that for me to distribute to the board?
You could send it into my office, and I would distribute with your packets.
Okay, because I've got, I've got a whole bunch of stuff that I got last week, last meeting, and they've got, they've got a full, a full detail for the next three years of planned construction. They're going to have closures from Fitchburg to Acton this year for a period of about three months, I believe, and it's going to get worse. They're going to have it all the way from Fitchburg to Boston, it's going to be closed on the weekends for three to six months in 2014, and then closer to six months in 2015. So, there's going to be considerable disruption there. And it's all because of their, they're adding a second line between Fitchburg and South Acton, because the South Acton is the stop, I don't know how familiar people are with the commuter schedule, but rush hour, they go all the way to Fitchburg, but off peak hours, they tend to stop, go north station to South Acton. So, they're adding a second line there, and they are improving two or three stations, which is why the closures are required.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, that's a big update. Thanks.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Matthew.
Yes.
MRPC is me. We went to the meeting last Tuesday of the month, this month, we voted all the new members, and Tom was a committee member at large, so they kind of put me in that spot, so I'm on the board there at the MRPC. And we talked about, they went to Dallas and got a whole new budget tracking system that we went line item to line item on what the budget for 2013-14 is going to be for the MRPC, and where they see those monies going. And I do have those this evening for Marion. So, what I do is, after the meeting, I get copies of everything, and I give Marion a copy, and then she funnels that stuff, just so visually you have it with your packets. So, that's really all we did, and our next meeting is at the end of this month, the last Tuesday. Any questions? All right. Nathan, we have school building and school reuse, so if you want to touch on both of those?
School building and school reuse. So, I think the reuse might fall under what?
Yeah, that'd be me.
Oh, I am sorry, you are right. We put...
The building part?
The reuse, we put Damon on.
We didn't meet, but I did remember the materials I didn't bring last time, so, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know that I have these in electronic format, but Marion...
You scan them.
If you want to scan them, yeah, I'll give them to you. Yeah, I can pass them around, I'll send them down, and they'll come back. So, what you're going to see there is the, the site layout, you're going to see the proposed floor plans, what, the sort of, at the schematic level, you know, showing like where the different functions for the school will be located in the building. And then there's what they call the massing, which is, sort of gives you a rough idea what the outside of the building might look like. And so, you can, you can take a look at it. There's another meeting on the 24th. I'm interested in, you know, getting a little more information about, the floor plans, to me, look pretty good. I mean, if you have, if anyone has any input, they could, welcome to either provide it directly to Loxie, or if you want to provide it to me, and I can bring it to them, I'm happy to do that. The massing, I have some questions about. I, I don't know if they're, I'm curious as to whether that's their final take on it, or whether they're going to do some more iterations. That group has another meeting in a, another week or so, so if I don't communicate with someone before then, I'll probably discuss it with a, with them at that meeting.
And are they still on track, Nathan, for the September timeframe for the state to come back with what the cost?
I think so, yeah. I think so.
They're still looking at that?
Their quantity estimation is, or estimation is a big part of what they're focused on now, is getting the, building out the level of details in the plan, so they can do accurate construction and cost estimates. I think probably more on the cost side, but a little bit of both. So, yeah, I think, as far as I know, they're on schedule for that, haven't heard that they're not.
Okay. Any other questions for Nathan, any?
Yeah, where is the site? Isn't the, the same location that they're in now, is it?
It is basically behind the existing high school. It's the same track and field we have now. This is where they'd be putting it. The high school is kind of here now. I assume that's the same parking lot?
Okay.
Location.
Interesting.
Nathan, I guess the only question I had is, were they're bringing six, seven, and eight into this school? Is there any particular reason why they've only kind of incorporated one gymnasium into the overall project?
Yeah. So, I think they've focused on, my understanding, and it's a great question, Toby, is that they focus, for whether it's gymnasium or some of the other kind of auditorium, a couple of those other, they have some shared facilities, and the reason for doing shared facilities is to focus the investment on a higher quality facility and then have it be shared. One of the, even with a higher quality facility, there's significant cost savings compared with duplicating it.
I understand that, but I guess my question is, just by the sheer fact of the youth programs that we have here, and it's typically always been a battle for gymnasiums, I would feel it would be more appropriate to be looking at, if you're combining all those grades in one school, that you would look to have two gymnasiums to be able to encompass all of those other things that happen within the community.
Yeah, so that's an interesting, that's, that's interesting input into the space planning, which I don't know, you know, I didn't attend enough of the visioning meetings to know if they got other similar input. So, I'll pass, you, feel free to pass it to Loxie, I can also pass that on to that, that board. One thing I would say is, I think it's that concern in general, the other place where that could, is definitely relevant, is with the reuse conversation.
Right. If the Passios Building goes away, even though that gymnasium is small, it does serve a function today for the smaller kids. If you do away with one of those gymnasiums, it just makes the, exasperates the problem, so...
Exactly.
I think it needs, it's something that should be at least looked at.
Definitely, definitely.
Any other questions for Nathan?
No.
Okay, I didn't get to look at them.
Would you like me to scan those and send them on?
Yes, if you could, Marion, that would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, Damon, the school reuse committee, how's that going?
I'm hearing that the first meeting is going to be on Monday. I won't be in the country, so I didn't know if one of you guys want to take the first meeting, being as...
Next Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go for you.
Yeah.
If, and nobody else wants to go, I don't want to step on toes.
No, that's, I don't know.
Okay. I would be more than happy to go and represent you that, that evening.
Great. I think it's at 7:00. Kathy hasn't posted it yet, but I got a tentative date out of her.
Just email me if you get an email. Thank you, and Marion, I know if you get one.
Yes.
You can include me as well. Thank you. All right. So, there's nothing to report there, except the meeting. Marion, we have capital planning, what's going on with that?
It is, we are meeting throughout the summer to revisit all of our forms and processes and procedures, and that's, we'll have a meeting, I think it's Wednesday morning, and that's what will be finished up. We have redone some of the forms, and this will be the introductory letter that we'll be working on, to make it as clear to the department as possible.
Are they all using the new form? You have a new term you created?
We will be sending everything out the end of August, first part of September.
Okay. All right. Planning directors report.
Highfield Village, we have a letter that came in, and it's very brief, and what they're asking, what they're asking for, Mr. Godfrey, Kent Olsfield, on behalf of Mr. Godfrey, are requesting the extension to go until September 30th to 13. The applicant is currently negotiating with the Lunenburg Sewer Commission and developing a new agreement, since the last agreement has expired.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Toby and Nathan. I'll let you two go first before I speak.
Okay. Nathan, did you have a question first?
No, go ahead, Toby.
In regards to Highfield Village, do you recall what that's currently zoned?
Yes, it's currently zoned, huh, now I, you got me thinking. I thought it was currently zoned residential, but it...
Yeah, but is it, but is it outlying, is it Residence B? Because will we change the zoning?
Yeah.
I know, I don't know whether or not Highfield Village still falls under the old zoning.
I know, I don't think we changed it down there, but I'd really, to be specific, Toby, I'd have to go and look at the map.
Okay, so my request would be is to validate what the zoning is, and whether or not, based on the changes that we made in the outlying district, whether or not, if this is in the outlying district, whether or not they don't need to comply with our new zoning standards.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I talked to the sewer manager today, because I wanted her to be aware, and if she had any input. The negotiations that they are doing is really with Mr. Godfrey, and it is not on the plan. They're, at this point, they're not negotiating on the plan, and I see that Mr. Luck is here, who's a member of that commission, and she wanted me to be absolutely sure that they weren't holding it up, and they're not. They're waiting for, they did do MIPA, and he had, they had to, apparently do some more work with MIPA, and they are negotiating the commission, is negotiating with Fitchburg, not Mr. Olsfield. He isn't doing the negotiation, they're negotiating with Mr. Godfrey, who's the developer.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Nathan.
Am I correct?
A little confusing near the end.
Yeah, hi. Go ahead, Nathan.
Oh, no, I, well, I do have some questions, not pressing, eh, not too pressing. I mean, this is Highfield, we've renewed them a bunch of times. Yeah, I, I, no, no comment right now.
Okay.
Just to, just to go back to that point, as I just looked at the zoning map that was in our things, they are Residence A, so they're okay.
Okay.
Okay, so they wouldn't need to be in compliance, other than with our current standards for Residence A.
Okay. Because yes, I, I know the whole sewer thing, because my...
Your husband works.
And my cousin are on there, and every time we extend it, because of the sewer, they of course go back and say, no, it isn't in front of us.
It isn't the sewer.
And we say, get a letter from Barbara, and you come back with a letter from Barbara that says, yes, it was extended out. So, I'm totally aware now that it, that there's nothing withholding in, in the sewer department. I don't...
Juliana, Mr. Luck is asking to speak.
Okay, and as soon as I'm done, I would be more than happy to give him the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, my question is, the last we heard, it was the MIPA, and the MIPA was supposed to be done back in April.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, but I don't know what, you know, what he, what they've done with that, because I know that the sewer manager worked on, on that MIPA thing, but, application, but I don't know what, what it ended up as, because we don't have a copy of it.
Okay. And what did we extend them to now? Because it was June 30th, was it not?
Yes.
Was the last extension we gave them June 30th?
Yes.
Okay. And they're requesting us to extend them till September 30th?
No, excuse me. The last, the date of the presentation of this was July 8th, and they are asking to go to September 30th.
Okay, because July 8th is today?
Yes.
Our next meeting.
Yes.
We, we did it to...
Yes.
The June 30th. Okay, and so they want to go to September 30th now?
Yes.
Okay. Carl?
And again, what is the compelling argument to go to September 30th?
I believe they're still waiting for the MIPA review, is what that first sentence...
It says, due to MIPA review, extending on behalf of, as his client, John Godfrey, we're requesting an extension until September 30th.
And back when we extended it till June, it was that MIPA should be back by the end of April, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested to hear from the sewer committee about this. I mean, at some point, we'd, we'd sort of laid out some milestones that we were trying to hit with these guys, and now I feel like I'm in the dark again. Like, I'd like to be able to go back to these milestones and refer to them. And when they miss these things, I kind of want a letter from their doctor, or whatever, as to why they missed school, because like, I, I don't feel like there's really a...
I agree.
Yeah, you know, you know what I'm saying? The other thing that's concerning me is, we're getting awfully close, like, let's say, we're getting awfully close, we're getting these renewals too late to where they're expiring, and we're...
Well, this one expires today.
Yeah, I mean, so let's say we cancel this meeting, two of us, you know, I don't know.
Don't have a quorum.
Right. Would we be looking at constructive approval?
Right.
Yeah, see, that's, see, this is...
Nathan, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm not happy.
Okay, gotcha.
Carl, could you? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I said, Mr. Chairman. No, I just wanted to clarify, it's pretty simple as far as the sewer commission. My name's Carl Luck, and I'm chairman of the sewer commission. Thank you for having me. Right now, the only discussions between Highfield and the sewer commission are regarding us providing an allocation to them for, for their sewerage, okay? And we are, we are discussing negotiating agreement to give them that coverage. It's tangled up with the Fitchburg IMA, unfortunately, so the two are in sync, but there's nothing else before the sewer commission right now from Highfield, there's no new plans been submitted. The MIPA, we did respond to and, and made an input to the state on the MIPA, and I understand it's now in redraft or something. But again, the only thing before the sewer commission is trying to secure an allocation for them, and that's it. We've seen no new plans or anything else, so there's nothing in, in process to, to look at all of the comments that we had and the concerns with the plan, which is a concern to us, with the, with sort of the delays, is, at some point, we need to see a new plan and go through that whole approval process. That's where we are today with them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Carl. Okay. Because what I'm going to make a recommendation is to extend them till July 22nd, our next meeting, or the 23rd, if we want to get technical. And I would like Mr. Olsfield to come in and, and walk us through, step by step, why this is continually, as, as he did almost six or eight months ago. Because he, you know, had given us a lot of, we're working on this, it's going to get done, and I feel the same as you, that we're in the exact same place today as we were eight months ago. They were working with MIPA, they hoped to have something with MIPA, so I would say that we extend them, and that the applicant come in front of us, and as, as Nathan said, give us a bullet, I would like a bullet print of, we started, we did this on this date, this on this date, in a chronicle, chronological order of this extension, and why we keep extending them.
Yeah, that sounds great, Juliana, and I guess going forward, too, I'd like to see the milestones that they intend to hit that results in a completed plan that we can approve.
We can add that on to the backlog, and then going forward, what does your calendar look like?
Exactly. And then, you know, I, I think, if, depending on what that looks like, I mean, maybe we should have them on the agenda every week, or just about, and then just be, you know, I think, you know, depending on what their milestones and how far apart they are, we might want intermediate milestones to get updates on, are they on track to hit their milestone?
And I think in July 22nd, when we see the milestones, we can then say...
Okay.
Okay, well, you're saying August, so you need to come in front of us, August, to tell us, did you meet that? Did you not meet that?
Yeah, yeah. That sounds great.
You know what I mean? So, as we see those milestones, we can then say, and this is when we want to see you again, and please don't email us, we would like you to call the planning director, get on the agenda, come in person, and explain to us what the situation is and why this milestone is now, again, not being met.
Great, great. Yeah, so I mean, basically, at the end of that meeting next week, we should know when he intends to have completed plans.
Exactly.
Excellent. Okay, thanks.
Does that make sense for...
Well, could you give us some background on it, me and Matt, since we weren't part of the board?
Sounds like it.
It was here before I was part of the board.
But what, uh...
Toby, go ahead. Toby's our historian, Toby and Emeryan are the historians.
This, this project's been around for, for a long while now. I got to say, it's got to be eight-plus years that this has been going on, so they came forth with a subdivision plan that entailed incorporating sewer and what have you, and it's just gone through iteration and iteration of extensions to get certain portions of the plan filled. So, right now, it sounds like they're working with the sewer commission to get allocation, they're still working with MIPA, and I guess at some point in time, there should be a completed plan from which we can, can work, but right now, there is just nothing, and, you know, some of this may be a market-driven thing, but, you know, that, that, nothing that says that the plan can't get completed and they can build when they choose to build, but...
So, it still has to be approved by this board, or...
If, to be perfectly honest, Amy and I would have to have Marion go back and check, because I don't know whether or not we ever officially signed off on a plan, and I don't believe we have.
We have not.
We have not, so...
We have not.
So, this is just to get it before us, is what they're getting the extension for?
All right. So, they got to get all this other stuff done, so that ultimately they can come to us with a completed plan that we can go ahead then and approve.
And they need to get a plan that the sewer commission can, can study and see if it proves what they have, and so far, from what I gather from both Carl and Barbara, that hasn't happened yet.
Right, well, sewer, conservation, border health, it's got to go through that whole town process, which it, it hasn't, because we haven't got an approved plan to pass out.
So, what happens if they don't get an extension? They have to start all over, or what's the result of that?
Should we submit a preliminary, I mean, after eight years?
Well, that, that's, they, they keep asking for this extension. They dropped off the first plan, and we sent it out, and now it's, it's kind of been, the bikes, the, the wheel just keeps going, but it, it, nobody has signed off the, the border health, conservation.
Okay. I can see a number of problems with something like that, though. I mean, first off, they're locked into the existing regulations eight years ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're not subject to the current regulations, or anything that's been passed in the last eight years.
Right. That's why...
They keep getting extensions, 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 they're still designing. Is, how is extensions, how are they regulated? Are they bylaw? In our, in our bylaws? Excuse me?
I don't think they're regulated by the bylaw, we're allowed to give extensions, and they usually have to have good reason for them, and...
And we have to sign off on the extension, they send a formal letter in writing, or same as if we need an extension, because some, for some reason, there was an issue on our end, there has to be that written, and we did go to council on this. We did, we did go to town council on this matter as well, and their recommendation was it's, it's not penalizing anything. He recommended that we continue to give the extension.
Yes, he did.
That, that was what came back from our town council, so we, we did research it with them as well. And when you see, I think it's easier, as Nathan said, because even for me, to remember all the reasons why we've extended them, I, I can't off the top of my head without having that chronological order in front of us. You know, so to be able to say, well, in 2006, we did it because of this, and then And then in 2000, I can't off the top of-
So we're just asking them to come present and explain if there's still-
And I have it, you know, of course, on file.
Marion has it on file. But, and then that'll help you two as well, because you'll get it from the beginning, and it'll refresh all of us as well.
Yep. Sure. Is there actually a recorded number, a limit of extensions?
No.
Why not?
I don't know why not. Our, we did turn this, as Joanna said, to our attorney to advise us because they were becoming excessive. And he said, give them the extension.
Goals, goals, right? New verbiage.
So there's a couple other pieces of information about the project that might help explain the succession of extensions, I think. One is that, for a while, the Sewer Committee, and this may or may not still be the case, was quite, quite large proponents of the eventual completion of the project, this project, because the developer has offered to make some improve, do some development of some sewer capacity. That, in addition to serving the new development, is going to solve some problems with sewerage in some areas of Lunen, over around Wedding Street, I think, which-
Maple Parkway and White Street.
And White Street, that are, have some, have some problems, I guess, with septic and sewer. And this would make remedying those much more cost-effective for the town. So there's been some, although, you know, the schedule's been pretty abysmal, there's been some good collaboration between this developer and the Sewer Committee. And for a good amount of time, I'd say that was the main legs this thing had, was, you know, it is, it is a pretty costly project, and it could, you know, offer a nice benefit to residents of the town, a significant savings to the town if it were completed. So that's one factor. I think the other factors regarding the zoning bylaws, I think the fact is there has, I suspect there has not been a great deal of change in the zoning bylaws for residents A district that this is in, so that hasn't been as pressing an issue. And there's also, because there's been so many extensions, and it's kind of a mess, if there is light at the end of the tunnel, from a legal standpoint, it is, you know, not to say we'd let it go on forever, but there's legal value, shall we say, in bringing this to a harmonious conclusion. So while we do want to tighten the screws a bit, that, I think, is why council said, unless there's a really pressing reason to pull the plug on it, kind of try to keep it moving forward.
Just to be, to clarify from Nathan's perspective, they were working with the Sewer Commission. I don't know if you're familiar with where the X1 station is, but where the water tower is. That road there was called Pope Road. I believe that's where the original sewer was supposed to come down, was Pope Road. They're working with the sewer department. It's now will come down Maple Parkway and White Street, and then connect over onto Mass Ave. So whereas going down Pope Road, there would have been no added benefit to any of the residents in the community. Coming down Maple Parkway and White Street gives those residents the possibility for relief from Title V systems and be able to connect to sewer. So, so what was the benefit? So that is one of the reasons for the extension.
That's how it all started. You know, because they got the plan, and it went to the individual departments. And when sewers saw it, that became a benefit to, I believe, of Lunenburg to go that way. Okay, so we're going to put it on the calendar for July 22nd. We'll ask Ken to come. And again, to chronological day one, and then, you know, what the goal is for the end result of this development, what the milestones are going to be. Okay, thank you, Marion. New England Farm.
Well, their building permit has been, and I scanned it to you, has been given to them, and they haven't picked it up yet, but they are ready to go with the building itself, beside the Tennessee gas. I just want to keep you up to date on that.
Okay, thank you. Emerald Place.
Emerald Place. There's two villa buildings, 41 to 47, and 49 to 55, on Carousel Lane, which will be completed this week. Three more villa buildings, two on Great Pond Road and one on Rhodes Garden Lane, will start as early as next week and continue for the next several weeks. Delivery of the boxes to assemble the next building began today, so you'll see new boxes down there. Landscaping is an ongoing process and will coincide with completion of each building or sooner. I want to return an email to them because they were supposed to give us a schedule of how they were going to bring the interior roads that were slightly damaged during the winter up to snuff. And I haven't got that schedule yet, so I will email them and tell them that we need that schedule.
And my question, and then I'll go to the board. The villas that are going up, those are still all on the-
Yes.
The existing compound side, not the beach side?
No, some of those villas, Joanna, I think, are on the beach side. But they're doing less of the member I told you, and I want an official-
They were permitted for three, and they're down to two.
Yeah, and I want an official statement. They just did that verbally. And in my correspondence to them, I'm a little behind because of vacation. But in my correspondence to them, I will ask them for official letter, too.
Right. Okay, because that's what I would like to know when they're going to, because that's new.
Yes.
Breaking ground across the street at the waterfront is new. And I think if that's the case, we just want to give Mike Conservation, where it's near the water.
Yes.
We want to make sure everybody knows that they're starting now on that end.
Yes, I agree.
So all the other town departments know.
I agree with you.
Madam Chair, just point of clarity, because what I heard Marion read was that they were putting up additional villas on roads that are on the main parcel where the park was. She didn't mention Prospect Street or Lakefront Avenue. So from my perception, there is nothing that's going on the lake property as of yet.
At this time, no.
Okay.
No, because they didn't, Carousel Lane and Great Pond Road and Rhodes Garden.
Thank you, Toby.
This is kind of a sore subject for me when it comes to Emerald Place at this point in time. Because although it's a nice project and what have you, it, right now, is currently something that's, for all intents and purposes, quite different from what it was that we had approved. This was supposed to be a for-sale project. And right now, from my understanding, is I still don't believe there are any sales yet in that project.
My understanding is it's all leased to, to own.
It's all leased to own, there is not one that has sold.
I guess, I guess what I would like to have asked of the developer, what is the expectation that the town of Lunenburg can have to where this project will meet the standard for which it was approved, which was a owner-occupied development? Now, what is their projecting, is it projection?
With specific-
Is this a five-year, is this a 10-year? You know, so that we have an idea as when the town is going to get what it was that we approved.
With the over 55.
Oh, yeah, that's already been-
Well, that's in the context of the project, right? Because all of it is supposed to be a for-sale unit, and I think it would be, it's fair to ask that question.
Okay.
Put that in the letter.
Because I do get that feedback a lot that-
I'll put a copy of the letter in your pack.
It's just become a rental unit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that, that project has not been completely signed off on, has it? Couldn't be, it's not done construction, right?
The plan has been approved, okay? The plan's approved, and they're in the construction phase. But when this project was approved, it was supposed to be a for-sale project. It was supposed to be owner-occupied. It has now turned more into a lease-to-own environment, and I just would like to understand ultimately when it's going to be what we had approved.
And we approved the plan, and then when it finishes, the building inspector zoning officer will go and give them the occupancy permits. We follow it all the way. They email back to Marion every Monday, the status reports, making sure they're following the plans.
So was there anything legally recorded in, say, an order of conditions or anything as far as this rental versus ownership?
Yes, they, go ahead, Toby.
No, I just want to be careful, it's not rental. It's leased to own. Different projects have-
Ownership versus non-ownership?
They have a different context, though, in the whole field of things when it comes to real estate, rental versus lease-to-own and what have you. So, right now, I understand the market conditions.
They did come in front of us.
Came forward and let us know that they were going to do that. My concern is, is that the longer that this goes, because of the way that lenders work in getting FHA lending for a project like that, there needs to be a ratio of owner-occupied to investment types of scenarios, or lease-to-owner rentals. In this case, it could make it difficult unless they're going to be doing the financing, that this may wind up, because of the way it's been handled, is that it could be a continuous lease project. It was just not what we had intended it to be. So those are why I have the questions.
And going further with that, Madam Chair, Toby, I had thought about this, too, for a long time, and I'm wondering if we should have a legal input on this? Do you feel that-
Well, let's find out first what they have to say first.
After we get the return.
See what they say, and then we can always-
I don't want to spend money where we don't have to, but I'd like to understand.
Okay, you can have a conversation with town council.
That was why I questioned whether it was in an order of conditions, because that is enforceable after the fact, is it not?
Again, that would have to go back to legal counsel at this point in time. Because to this point in time, they haven't done anything that's illegal.
Good.
Any other questions on Emerald Place? Tri-Town Landing.
They, what we're doing with Tri-Town Landing now, they have their occupancies, and they're being full. There's no further information to date about the rest of four, five, and six. What I'm doing now is putting all the paperwork into the state to get the financial back into $3,000 per unit. And I have to make what we call an update yearly report. And then we're trying to figure out if we qualify for 40S, the school thing.
The school money?
And I'm working directly with a woman from the state, because there's been some confusion on that. And so I, now that I've got, we never received in our office that we are aware of, but I was out at this time last year. The, our town manager doesn't feel, it came through Town Hall. And therefore, we need to go back, backtrack with this lady to see where we fit with the 40S last year as well. But it's quite a complicated form that has to be filled out. And actually, all of this information and calculations has to come from the Board of Assessors, plus what I get from the school as far as school count is concerned. And I'm making an appointment with our assessor. And I've already sent him the information. And it's quite lengthy. They have to go back, they have to look at excise tax and everything, because before you can get that money, any money for the students, it has to show that the students living there has affected the cost of education in the town of Lunenburg. So that's, I'm really deep into that, and it's very complicated.
Okay. Any questions on Tri-Town? Okay, Asian Imperial.
Well-
At our last meeting, Steve DeBettin quartered, visited us and inquired about a fence down there.
I haven't got that information all together yet, because I had to go and look through some agreements and so forth. So therefore, and it isn't on the agenda tonight, so therefore, I will have an answer. Joanna and I talked today about an action report for each meeting, and I will hope to have all that information for you for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Asian Imperial, the parking situation?
Well, the parking situation down there is as tight as it's been, and they are still talking to neighbors and so forth. But one of the problems that they're having is the closed-off area. Because that is, we did the development plan review, just to clarify, and the Board of Appeals gave the permit. And they, while that is opened, that not following their permit. So we're trying to figure out the best way to close it. They came across, their developer came across with a chain-type of thing that really isn't working yet, out yet. They've had some incidents where people have taken it off or drive-through it. So they are going to meet on this again to see how they can secure that so that it is secured enough to fulfill the mandate of the Board of Appeals.
I have the same comment on that as I had the first time. There was a decision by the Board of Appeals, and their decision specifically said gate.
There is a gate. They have gated it.
Plastic chain.
Right. Well, and that's the issue now, the building officials working with them on the, as Marion said, on the type of gate that is there.
That will be sturdy enough to fulfill that obligation.
Still not a gate, though. The gate has got a post, and it swings.
And again, that would be the building officer and the zoning Board of Appeals.
And it's been, what, two months?
Mm-hmm. But that's their basket. That's their basket. But I look at it, and I don't want to proclaim to be an engineer or- Is there drainage? Because where the road is, on both sides, there's beautiful flowers, earth mounds, plantings. Is that like a vegetation management?
No.
Type thing? Or could they take that out?
They can take it out.
And put the additional parking there? There's, from where the round window is on the side, there's that whole side. And then where the road is to, if I'm standing on Mass Ave to the right, there's all that vegetation, plantings, and I didn't know if that was, you know, for water management.
No, that's landscaping. Jesse is on vacation. He shall be back tomorrow, and he and the developer, Mr. Pelletier, is going to meet on that. And so we'll have more information again in next, next week.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman? I am an engineer, and I can tell you that there's a limit of an impervious percentage of a lot. They're probably pretty close to it right now, I don't know.
I don't either, that's why.
Also, any increase impervious, any increase in pavement, transition from grass to pavement, is going to increase the drainage requirement. Going to have to require a redesign of the drainage, my understanding.
We will get that information from the pure engineer.
Well, that was just a question.
My concern is, right now, if you go there on a Friday night or Saturday night, the SUVs are driving right on the landscape. If you drive by there on a Friday night, you'll see three Suburbans on the plantings.
I know, they've got ruts pretty much already.
Yeah. They, they're driving right up on them, so, okay. Anything else on Asian? The next one, I can't see it. 651 Chase Road, Solar.
I sent you the latest-
The Townsend memo?
Yes. And the only other news that I have concerning that.
Do I see that?
Yes.
The town's working with Townsend to share the metering?
And they're also working with AIR.
Okay.
That's the latest thing that's come out. And there was a plan, or Board of Selectmen's meeting, I happened to catch it on television, where there was a thorough discussion with both of those units as far as the credits are concerned and so forth. Both, the one on Chase Road and the one down on there. I mean, I don't feel qualified to extend that, but I could get you the Board of Selectmen's minutes from it if you wished to know more about that.
I watched it. I don't, I don't know if anybody else needs the minutes. No.
Thank you.
Okay. The next was the Marijuana Clinic.
Just reminding you that people are looking at it.
And AIR is Shirley Businessman, thanks voters.
Mm-hmm. So I just want you to know that you might want to, before the next town meeting, which would be probably in the fall, look at it from the point of view. Some towns are, you can't say no, apparently. Now, one town tried it, they caught it at the state level. But it, most towns are saying that they would review it for a year, hold it off. I can look further into that if you're interested. But the only reason I put it on is to keep it in front of you, so it doesn't bypass you.
Can we, yeah, would it make sense to talk, spend a few minutes amongst ourselves and just talk about that a little bit? So, yeah, so, okay, so, thanks for, appreciate Marion keeping this on our radar. So what's the posture right now? Let's say, somebody comes to town, says, oh, I got a project, it's a Marijuana Clinic. Right now, are they able to cite that, do, you know, just anywhere? Like, given that we've, like, I'm thinking back to the Solar thing, where it's like, if you haven't done anything, pretty much, it could get cited in any, whatever, commercial space, let's say. Which may, you know, may be fine, may not be fine, whatever. But where are we at right now? Like, if such a project were to come forward next, you know, on the 24th?
Nowhere. Nowhere. We would have to, you'd have to decide, because you don't have anything officially decided by this board of how you would entertain it, would you entertain it, and so forth, or you would recommend putting it off, as many of the towns are. But we have done nothing. towns are. But we have done nothing, had no discussion, real discussion, or decision or input on where you would like to respond if a project came before you.
Well, all right. So therefore, we would need to approve any project that met commercial project specification?
I think you have to, I don't know whether you have to approve it as such and say, yes, you can come in. I think you can do what the other communities are doing, but they've done it ahead of time. They've done it before somebody has approached them.
Gotcha.
So that's why I keep putting it before you, is so that you can make a decision of whether you'd like me to investigate how they, what the, you know, criteria is and so forth. But according to the state, they have flatly told one community who says, we don't want it, period, no, they can't do that. So you, but you have some freedom to say, we want to consider the impact on our town, we'd like to put it off for a year, so forth, in, in that way. And I could contact the towns that have done that and see just exactly how they've done it, or we could go through Joel.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, yeah, so, you know, the process you talk about saying, oh, well, you know, we, could we make, you know, they, if someone comes in and says, I want to put it in this specific spot now, given that we've done nothing, you know, can we say, ah, sorry, you got to wait a year, or, you know, it'd be interesting to get some clarity around that.
I will, I will, if you would like me to. I haven't had that kind of response from you, but I would be glad to look it up and to see, you know, as, as far as placement's concerned, and just what you would be allowed not to do, as, as well as to do.
Well, and that's what's going on in AIR right now, is there's someone that wants to open a, a bank. There's only five allowed in the county. So in Worcester County, there's only going to be five allowed in each county.
Right.
So he wants to be, you know, one of the first up and running. And in the article Marion gave us, it, it says right under, under state law, a community may delay permission for the year or move forward with it.
Oh, so we can.
You can delay.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's good enough. That's what I was wondering. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can, as a community, as a planning board, we can delay that for one year.
A specific project?
You can't ban it.
Okay, I understand.
You can delay it for a year to see what the state does. Because, you know, in reading this article, which was great information.
Yep.
It, it said how they have to get approval from the state, from the federal government, before they can open it. They have to have a $500,000 bond.
Yep.
So there's, there's a multitude of things.
So that would also give us, well, we have that ability to delay for you, that would give us time to like, wait till town, get our bylaws in at town meeting or whatever. Okay, that's good.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I guess, I mean, I'd be curious, just taking 15, 15 minutes now, if you want, just to understand, like, from the board members. It sounds like AIR, first of all, they, they sound like they canvassed that they were able to get some kind of vote from the town as to what they thought about some aspect of it. You know, what are the pros, cons, and, you know, kind of concerns, issues about, around this issue, you know? I guess we could talk of what we feel they are, as far as what people in the town feel. What's our plan for feeling the town out on that, if any?
I, I don't know, because this is where it becomes part of your personal belief versus a, for me, you know, I'm, oh, no, I don't, I don't, I don't want that on my main street. But I, I don't know. I really haven't given it a lot of thought because I, I know it's not something I support. I, I didn't support legalizing marijuana. So I, I don't really know.
Right, so there's definitely that component of like, personal belief. Then there's stuff that's a little more.
The community.
Neutral, like, you know, I don't know. Are they going to be using it on the site? In which case, are there, you know, driver safety issues, like, you know, with a bar or whatever, or, you know, what, are there economic benefits? Those are kind of, you know, the personal belief part comes into play because you, it's weighed against, but there are some other, probably some more.
Well, I don't know that they use it on the spot, like, you know, if you buy alcohol, you don't sit at the liquor store drinking it. You take it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't, I don't.
That's what I, I will be glad to investigate that for.
Yeah, because I think that would be easier if, if you kind of gave us the state legislative of what the goal is, what it would look like in the communities, and then we could have reading that and a conversation. Because right now, it's a lot of, for me, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know. Do they smoke it there, or do they take it home?
Okay, so like, what happens there is the kind of the question, exactly?
I was assuming it was, it was like any other store. You go in, you purchase it, and you take it home.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
Well, first off, AIR, if, whether or not AIR lets that in, they're in Middlesex County, so they're not going to take away from one of the five in Worcester.
That's right.
Second, this was a ballot question recently? How did the town vote? I mean, what was the result?
It wasn't a ballot question. We, we didn't have that.
Medical marijuana was.
Medical marijuana.
Yeah, in the state it was. Yeah, we could probably get the, that'd be a good indicator. Now, these dispensaries are for medical marijuana, which was voted for.
Yep.
Right. So how did Lunenburg vote on that?
That was my question.
Could you get that from the council?
I mean, after anything, that'd be a great way to get a read on.
Exactly.
On the community.
And then, and then the third thing is, is the state has decriminalized marijuana. You can have up to, I don't know, an ounce or something, and you can, you can be smoking it in public and get a, a ticket. So it's certainly not going to be like going to the liquor store and drinking it in the parking lot.
Well, you'd get a ticket, you said, right?
Because I think they will be able to. I think, yeah.
I think it'd be good to talk to the chief.
I think it's been decriminalized in the state, which, not to mention, is still.
I don't think you can smoke it in public.
Not without getting a ticket if you get caught.
Right, oh, okay.
Right, but it's not, it's not like class, it used to be Class D.
Yes, it did.
And you'd go to court.
Yes.
It's still, it's not legal by the federal government. They do not accept it.
Right.
So this is one of those weasel spots where we have actually gone and done something we weren't supposed to do as a state.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is it more like a bar, or is it more like a store, or is it something in between?
I think right now, it's more of the medical use as far as, I don't know the real logistics of it, but it's, they were very strict about it.
You need a prescription to go in.
Yeah, yeah. You need a prescription for a disease, it's not.
You have glaucoma.
Yeah.
Your doctors recommended this, you go.
But on the other end of the spectrum, I've been to California and Venice Beach before, and I see what their marijuana clinics are like. And I don't think it's to that legal point in Massachusetts. I would, again, would like clarification of exactly what you need to get your prescription. But I'm more afraid myself of what it could be when they evolve the laws as to what it is now, because I feel like it's very strict at this point, what in the future will come with the changing of the laws.
Just from a personal perspective, I just find it interesting where it's essentially talking about a pharmaceutical and opening a dispensary for that. You already have pharmacies in place that dispense drugs. Why would you create a whole nother industry called marijuana clinics when you have pharmacies and people that are regulated to dispense drugs? They could do that more reasonably. That's just a personal opinion.
It's not pharmaceutical.
A good one.
Pharmaceutical, I think, is chemical, something that's man-made.
Well, let me find out what I can.
Thank you.
I guess it was more to the point is that you have people that are familiar with the interactions of, of drugs and how they are dispensed at a pharmaceutical place, whereas if you separate a marijuana clinic out, and somebody else is taking additional drugs on the side, you don't know what the interactions of those drugs are and what the unintended consequences of that would be.
Oh, that brings up a good, good thought, is, is could we require it to be dispensed through a.
Pharmacy?
A current pharmacy.
Again, that'll go back to, that's a legal question. That goes back to state law.
Yeah, if we could get an outline of the law as it is, or.
I'll find out.
That'd be a lot more helpful than shooting in the dark right now.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, that's what, we're, we're doing a lot of what ifs, what, what if it would. Okay, moving right along. Notice and communications. We did get the conservation update.
Yes. Is there any question on them? Joanna, I don't think you want me to read them down.
I did not. I don't know if anybody else did.
No, the, the, the one interesting note there was the number of appearances from O'Brien before the conservation committee.
That was interesting.
Yeah. But I'm assuming nothing is going to be done until the litigation clears, or, I mean, it's in terms of actual work on the ground?
I understand that they can have, they're going to have this public hearing for the notice of intent, and they will, they will vote on it or put it off or whatever, and it's not until July 17th, so.
Can, is that, is that the appropriate process for an unapproved, for a denied plan? To have the COMCOM spending time?
No, it's not really normal. Usually, they do it simultaneously with us. And I asked about that from our legal counsel, that since there was the litigation, but he said that they can apply for anything, and that those committees can decide.
Okay.
Anything else on the notice and communications?
Yeah, something, I don't know whether it really belongs here because it's, it's not here by omission, but, or whether I should bring it up under members' issues. I did see something in the Lunenburg ledger that referred to the Lorden's project over on Wayland Road. They're looking to increase the number of units there from what I thought was 60-something, 64 to 81. I don't see anything here, and I don't know whether or not we shouldn't be.
Well, I don't have anything on it because of the fact that the, that goes before the Board of Appeals, as you know. And I haven't had any word from the Board of Appeals that they have requested. It's something I would have to ask them because.
Well, I'm, I'm just bringing it up because I saw it in the ledger.
Yeah.
As a notice. I think this board should be aware because it does affect the overall plan for, for the Wayland District, and has an impact on the things that we're, that we're looking to do. So I think it would, it would be reasonable for us to understand that and see if the Board of Appeals would like any recommendation from us or any thoughts from us in that regard.
I will do that, Toby.
Is, just a couple of quick questions. Is that the project on Wayland by McNally Field?
Yes. That's in Lomenster and Lunenburg.
Oh, it's in both?
There's parts of it in Lomenster.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't think so.
It's just a very small part.
The place has a small part in Lomenster.
Yes, I know, next to Mickey's.
Yeah.
But I also thought Lorden had some in Lomenster as well.
I'm not recalling it, Joanna.
It may be a small piece, but I, it's not much.
Is that a 40?
That's a 40B.
Which we don't approve, they.
The zoning board of appeals.
I just found it interesting that they were looking to increase the density when the whole argument before got them to be down to the number of units they are. Now that they were coming back, I just thought it was of interest to us.
And what, what's the unit, rough unit count right now? Is it, now, with a 40B, so is it, is it like, what percentage is affordable in that, one, one out of four? One out of four?
Yeah, it's a 25%. I believe is what the affordability component needs to be.
Gotcha.
So.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Schedule meeting. Our next one is July 22nd, and we're going to make sure that we have, Ken, that's going to be a long meeting, I think, just to give you guys a, a perimeter, because we're going to have the MRPC here doing a presentation, and we've also asked Kent to come. So just be ready, that, that'll be a, a longer meeting.
That's on July 22nd?
July 22nd, yes.
Is everybody going to be here on the 22nd? I don't remember.
Madam Chairman?
Can we answer Nathan's question?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is everybody here for the 22nd?
I'll be here.
Perfect, okay.
Okay. We have it listed as in the Ritter, and with discussion with you and MRPC, this presentation.
We're going to have the meeting here.
It's here. And, and I have secured that, so.
Which will be good to have, the, that way.
The whole town can hear.
Right, also with Highfield Village, the, the other committees can hear that as well. Okay, and then August, we have August 12th and August 26th. Now, is August 26th Memorial Day weekend, or is that the following weekend? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Memorial Day, I think, is the follow.
Is the following weekend? Okay.
Yeah. You have not declared any kind of summer schedule.
Labor Day, because Memorial Day's in May.
Nathan didn't feel the need to correct.
I, I, I was equally.
The, the MRPC, what is that going to be on?
Master. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
We've hired them to, well, they, with the state funding, to do master planning and work with us on our master planning to help talk more, a lot about center, our current center.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes. Members issue. I've just got a couple of things. As Marion had said earlier, I have asked, I know the sewer department does it, the Board of Selectmen does it, it has an action file issue. So if you see something that you have a question on, it goes on the action file. And then, like, I know you had had a question, and then there was a meeting it wasn't. So we can kind of start to keep those in order to make sure if there was a request or something out there, that it gets answered, it's in writing. So we're going to add that to the agenda. So we'll start to see our action files there. My second thing, Marion, looking at the, on the committee reports, we're going to put our names next to them.
Yes.
And then the planning directors' report, Highfield Village, could we put any project that's pending in front of us on here? And if there's no update, just put, no update?
I'd be glad to do that.
Just like, so, so Highfield Village, I'm sorry, what's Lorden's called, Toby?
Oh, I forget what that, I forget what that project's called, now, to tell you the truth.
Right, me too. So, but at least the name would be here, and just put no status, but it's here as a, as a reminder. And if we could add the addresses, because I know I made a mistake, and I was getting Highfield Village with Hollis Hills.
Mm-hmm.
Mixed up. So if I have an address with that, it helps me. I don't know how you guys feel, but if it just said, you know, Highfield Village and the address, it kind of brings a recollection.
You know where it is.
Yeah, well, because they all blend after a while.
Yeah.
And I made the mistake of referring to Hollis Hills when I was really talking about Highfield Village.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any member issues?
I have a few, actually.
Yes, okay.
The, going, getting back to number four, the, the extension request, is, is it, is it beyond reasonable to expect one extension request and then charge for progressive? Have a fee for continuous, or beyond one? I mean.
I, I don't know.
It's cumbersome, it, it takes the board's time, it's, it's sometimes a waste of time. I think that they, these developers should be required to pay for the time that they use.
This is the first time, you know, it's come before, I do have a fee scheduled for other things, which I'll, will give you two a copy of, and maybe I'll send one to the whole board, and you can look at it and decide whether that would fit into a fee schedule.
Is that something we could put as a fee, as a fee?
Well, we put.
Even if it's a $50 processing fee.
Yeah.
We've got to apply for an extension, right?
Yeah.
There's got to be some, some stipulations about the application.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why I can. Just because we haven't done it doesn't mean we can.
Can't do it. You want to check on that?
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Matthew.
Yes. I, I had asked this before of Marion, before everybody showed up, but the distribution of plans for projects, being an engineer and submitting to other planning boards in the state, if I come to a presentation with plans on the poster board, I always have at least reduced copies for each member of the board. And when I have to submit a design, either preliminary or definitive, we have to submit so many reduced sets for individual board members, and it's in their, it's in, it's in their requirements. Our requirements are seven copies. And I'm wondering where those seven copies go, and if they don't, if they're not supposed to come to the board members, then I would think that we should add five to that number, because I think it's very important that each of us has a plan set to review.
And we do. Whenever anybody presents in front of us, we always get a little.
And they read one at a, at a time.
The, the last presentation for the, they wanted a new variance, and they wanted to change the design. I, I don't remember seeing any plans, except for the ones on the poster board.
No, I think he gave us one at each table. What Matthew is asking is that I asked them to create these plans ahead of time. We have to be very careful because of the fact that they are really being reviewed by a reviewing engineer. And then he makes a report, and they make a presentation, but he wants the plans ahead of time.
You want the plans before they come in front of us and present?
I don't see, I, I, when, when there's an application made to the town for development, those plans should be distributed to the board members, my understanding. Most, most towns are like that.
This is similar to the request that Tom had made before, is that the developers provide us with a PDF file prior to the presentation so that we can take a chance and review that before they come and make their formal presentation. It's not asking for the large copies that are expensive, but it's the PDF file that shows what the intended project is and all of those things.
And you want to see that before you want to see the reviewing engineer's report?
Yeah, well, it only, it only helps us to prepare to be able to ask questions, excuse me.
So what, what I, I believe now, if I'm, I'm correct, is when they come to you and they submit their application with the, the Myler, the big set of plans.
Last for small.
That we get emailed a PDF. That we get emailed a PDF of that plan that we can research, so when they do come in front of us that evening, we've seen, and we can have our questions formatted.
Not only that, when, when you're only given it at the meeting, then you're sitting here trying to read and catch up, and you're missing what's being said, you don't have the opportunity to input, you don't have the time to...
I, I didn't have a problem when Tom wanted it, I don't have one now.
Okay.
That, that's just when they come in with their stuff, that they would also give you an emailed PDF to email to the board, and then the seven copies that they give, when we get those, if I'm, if I'm correct, Marion, we disperse them to the conservation, fire, police, sewer, DPW...
Full-size plans go to those departments.
Border Health and the Selectmen.
Almost every town that I deal with has reduced set for the individual members.
The seven.
Yeah.
But remember, they're being reviewed by a peer engineer, too.
Yeah.
That's great.
But even the night they come in front of us, and we have dialogue about it, it's still being reviewed by a peer engineer.
And the peer engineer just has the power of comment, I mean, we have, we have this decision power, I mean...
Madam?
There's oftentimes been things that the review engineer misses, and then...
Madam Chair, just back to Matt's point, I think what he was referring to was when Whitetails, Mr. White's project was here when they came in that night with the change, that was the first time we saw it, so, that's why I was asking for it subsequent.
Yep. Okay. I agree with that, no problem.
Okay, and also, I mean, it's great that you guys spend time to catch, catch us up on past projects and whatnot, but it would be nice if we had, for the, for the things that are currently on the docket, it would be nice if we had sets for those as well.
Sets of what, on them?
Sets of plans.
Copies of the plans that we got for Highfield Village, copies of plans that Lorden submitted, copies of anything on the docket that we dispensed.
Well, that would have come in, in the beginning of it, so from now on, you'd have them, if we followed this policy.
But is there a way for them, is Matthew's question, he would like to see, you know, the Emerald Place plans, he's never got to look at them, never seen them.
Well, they're very, what, the Emerald Place plans, in fact, Matthew, as I recall, we got a whole bunch of plans ready for you one time, and we kept waiting for you to come in to get them.
Yeah, because I came in to look at them, and you told me I had to make an appointment and come back.
Who told you that?
You did.
I did?
Mm-hmm.
That's not very unusual for me, because usually I set aside.
Anyway, anyway.
But anyway, do you, in order to get those plans, is it possible for you to catch up by coming in, in viewing these plans in the office, and then from now on, I will follow this new policy?
But, and I, but, and even easier, I think if, because I know you talk to all these people weekly, because they send you status reports, I'm sure they have PDFs that they've been giving to their contractors, to, if you say to them, you know, in your Monday session, hey, can you just send me a PDF of the plan, and then just forward them to Matthew and Damon, then they can read them at home.
Okay.
And just look at them, because they just want to get educated to the plan, instead of going and sitting in the office for three hours getting overwhelmed.
Okay, so we're looking for...
Highfield Village.
Highfield Village.
New England Farm, go right down your list, Emerald Place, Triton, Asian...
And Chase Road.
And Chase Road, and then I would do West Street, because that's not on the agenda, but that's a plan, the solar farm in West Street, Gary Lorden, who's not on here, what other developments?
Well, Gary Lorden is the Board of Appeals, you still want that?
Did we get a...
Honestly, it's only if it's going to involve our input on something in the future, if, if it's, I don't mean to give you busy work, Marion, and I apologize if that's what it feels like, but I only think that it's important for us to have the information.
Okay, I'll see what I can do getting that together.
I mean, in general, are you, do you, like, for, when you open a file for a project, Marion, what are you doing, are you doing, like, a hundred percent paper archiving, paper filing, or, like, some paper, some electronic, or you got the same things go, paper and electronic?
Some, both.
Because, I mean, there's tools out there that are actually free, like, you know, Google Drive and Dropbox, that we could, I mean...
I would really rather continue the methodology of filing with the help that I have, because for you guys to come in the office, you're not supposed to do the daily work, number one, and I appreciate any input, but I really need to keep the files going the way that they are, we file by notebook, and we file, we keep things electronically.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, no necessary impact on your filing methodology, it just creates a level of access and transparency on top of what you're doing, so that without us asking for stuff, if you just send us a note and say, oh, Whites Woods is back in play...
Well, I can do that without a problem, and like I said, I will get those out to you.
Okay, but, but, you see, you cut them off before you finish, because Whites Woods is coming in front of us, and here's the copy of their plan for your review.
Okay.
So you have an electronic plan of Whites Tails that you...
No.
Right, that's what Nathan's saying, we don't want to work and change anything you're doing, but going forward, every developer needs to give a PDF that, so whenever you address, right, whenever you address it, and what I would do is go back to the people you don't have a PDF on, and get that PDF so you have it, and, perfect.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, beyond that, too, what I'm saying, these are, for public documents, I'm not suggesting for anything that's, you know, not public.
Everything is public in the office.
So you can set up, if you're putting electronic stuff in your hard drive, you can set up a Google Drive account or Dropbox account, which basically just exposes your folder structure on a read-only basis to either the entire public, or to the members of this board, either way, and it's just, it makes, it makes it, it makes it easy to...
Okay, but I will work with our tech director on that.
If I may, Madam Chair, Nathan, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think that's a policy decision that really should be driven via the Board of Selector and through the Technology Department, and be applicable to all town departments, from a content management perspective, you know, as to the tools and things that should be utilized. Well, I think, I think there should be a commonality across the town departments, the municipal departments, as to how content is stored and what should be stored.
That'd be great, so I guess if the, I'll turn it right now, though, there's nothing. And I don't know when the heck they're going to have something, or how long it's going to take them, I know I could take half an hour, go into Marion's office, set this up, and, you know, so it's just a question of if they can, if they have the bandwidth and the interest to address it, then, yeah, it'd be great if we had a common policy, but...
But before we do that, I would need to talk to the technical director, too.
Yeah, that'd be great, talk to him and let him know that we're, there's these annoying people on the planning board who are interested in seeing the documents.
They would just like to see some information on...
Right, we could ask, what I would recommend is if we maybe ask the IT director if he could come to one of our meetings, so he understands what the request of the board is, and if it's something that, that he would be able to run with and do.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, truthfully, the biggest, I think the biggest obstacle, once you understand, once you look, is not the technology, it's actually the organizing the documents in a way that you just don't have information overload, you have accessible, you know, accessible information that you can navigate, but that's another, another story.
Again, the only, the only reason I go back to the policy decision here, is you're asking to put public documents in a cloud environment, that I don't know what the security levels are, and I don't know what the requirements and things are on the town, so I'm kind of reluctant to move and stop putting documents into the cloud when we don't necessarily have the appropriate security mechanisms in place for those things.
Well, yeah, sure.
And my obligation is to work with the technical director, and your obligation is decision-making, and it's, they're not supposed to do the daily work, so I can bring this proposal to him, he's very good, if, and then I would also address it through the town manager, and if, if it's something like Toby is talking about, I see Toby's concerns, and I'm really kind of concerned about it myself, and so let me look into it and see where we come up with it.
Okay, okay.
To address Toby's, actually, question, are you saying that there's limited access on public documents?
I'm not saying that there's limited access to them, but there may be some levels of security that you need to make sure, as to the content of the document, to make sure that it can't in some way, shape, or form be altered, so I don't know what those are, I just bring it up.
Okay, I guess I see what you're getting at.
Because there are certain things that may be...
Potential alterations.
Yes, that may be, certain things may be somewhat confidential, and you need to understand what documents and things those are, so...
Public documents, or just, just that?
All right, Matthew, anything else?
Yeah, one more question, comment on market conditions, I've heard that as an excuse for a number of different things that we have either allowed, or accepted, or put up with, the, they bear on the board, they bear on the town, they bear on the citizens, just as well as they bear on these developers. I don't think that they should be given as much weight as, I mean, I understand it's a, it's a, a bad time in the economy, but it's, it's a bad time for all, it's not just a bad time for developers. I don't think that we should be taking the stance that it's okay for them to have fifteen extensions on this, and it's okay for them to have a plastic fence instead of a gate, and it's okay for this and that and something else, I, I just, I don't see that, that one justifies the other.
Okay, I can't, the, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, no, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I wanted to ask a clarifying question.
And, and I think that's each of us, as, as these people come in front of us, you'll be able to voice that opinion and have that vote. Emerald Place, they came in front of us and asked to go from selling to leasing, because they had the first set of units up, and they were empty, so, so as a board, do we want empty facilities that are getting vandalized, kids are partying, and the police have to keep going, or do we want people living in there, taking care of the community, and at least bringing revenue into the town, ordering pizza, and, and living there?
Definitely.
So there's those situations that come in front of us that we have to, you know, weigh both ends.
Of course.
So as, as each one of them comes in front of us, you will definitely have a vote to say absolutely not, that doesn't make sense, and then it might make sense, so each one is a different reason as to why we made that decision, but that was just an example of Emerald Place, is that the whole first building was done and nothing was being bought, so...
I definitely understand that there are pros and cons to everything, but I just wanted to put that in, in our minds.
Yeah, no, and we walk away struggling, you know, with some of the, the decisions as well, you know, because do we, as Toby said, we, we never wanted it to be a rental-lease situation, we, we gave them the, the plan as a for-sale community, so, okay, what else?
That was mine, that was it for me.
Damon? Toby?
I'm done.
Nathan?
I don't have anything right now, thanks, Julianne.
No board issues?
Yeah, one thing, I mean, at some point, we need to follow up on our goals stuff and get that, add that to the agenda of one of the meetings.
Do you know where we are with that, Marion?
I haven't heard anything, other than the discussion that you had the last week.
You were going to have them all typed up, and we were going to read them?
Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't been there, so, I haven't been able to get them...
Oh, I thought you were waiting for something on our end, yours?
No.
Okay, okay.
But, yes, if you want to add to those goals, you certainly should submit it to me.
You're waiting for the, the typed up goals, to see, now we'll read those, to see if those are what we're finalizing, or if there's other things we want to add?
Yes.
So it's in your court, not us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so if we can have that on the July 22nd agenda?
No.
Why?
Because you're going to have too much on the July 22nd agenda, if you want a long, long meeting, I think when you're presenting a goal, you want a discussion.
Well, we've already had the discussion, though, we, we, we had a whole workshop on our goals, so now we're just looking for the typed up, and, and then...
Oh, okay, so there's no more addition to them, as...
Not, not that I'm aware of, once we read them, there might be some tweaking, but I, I think we started the whole ball, and now we're just, like I said, you're going to type it up, and if there's a couple of things we want to add or tweak, we'll do that at that meeting, and then our goals will be set, am I...
Madam Chair, point of clarity.
Yes.
What you're talking about, the goals have to do with master planning, we have been holding separate sessions for master planning, are you looking to have July 22nd just be more of a master planning session with MRPC, and not a regularly planned meeting?
No.
Okay, I'm asking the question, because before we would do, holding distinctly separate meetings for master planning, in addition to our regularly scheduled meetings.
This is them just presenting what they've done so far with that.
Right.
What, this is our scheduled fourth Monday meeting?
I understand that.
And, okay.
Again, my point is more about master planning, MRPC is coming here to, to present something relative to master planning, I just didn't know if, on the 22nd, you just wanted to make that entirely a master planning session that would then go over again the goals and stuff?
No, that wasn't the thought of that meeting.
Okay.
Because we're not talking about rewriting the master plan, they're just saying what they're going to do, what they've done so far, to give us a readout.
So you maybe, just a, just a proposal, it is a pretty full agenda with Mr. Olsteen and MRPC, if we could even, if we could just set an expectation that we'd receive the, the list of the, of the goals that we talked about, we can set a date, now, we'll be at that meeting, we'll all have that list of goals, we can set the next meeting agenda to actually, you know, we can take that home, think about it, see if we want to add anything, and then at the next meeting go in...
Sure, that's fine, that's fine, well, that's, because what, as soon as I got the list, I would either add my two bullets, three bullets, or say, yeah, it's perfect, so, you know, it's our first year, it's good for our first year.
Yeah, I think we'll need, like, a longer time to, like, go and divvy up the list, see who's going to take responsibility with the most, so, probably, so, yeah, I mean, if we just get the list, and then we can, that would be great, and then the next meeting we can be prepared to...
The August 12th meeting.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll get it, though, get the list on the 22nd.
22nd, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, perfect, all right, any other board comments, any public comments? All right, do we need to go into an executive session?
Well, if you want to discuss what I submitted to you, I sent it all by mail, because we can't do emails anymore, so each of you got a copy of Joel's...
I didn't have any questions.
I have a question about we can't do emails anymore, what is that?
You cannot, there's a long, now, that they're really being very, very fussy about it at the state level, and you can't really hold a meeting, if we get a confidential, we don't put it on the email, and that's why I sent it to you by regular mail.
Confidential, it cannot be dispersed.
And then we can't go back and forth with emails on it.
I do not have any questions, let me just, did anybody have any questions on that?
Well, you have to go into the executive session to discuss it.
I'm seeing if anybody has a question to go into executive session, I'm not asking what their question is, just if anybody has a question.
I don't have a question this time.
Right, I don't, I thought the, the letter was very self-explanatory.
I'm clear.
Okay, so we don't need to go into an executive session?
All right.
So I would take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I will see you on July 22nd here at the town hall.